Call to order. City Commission Meeting for July 20, 2021. Let the record show we are missing two Commissioners. Commissioner Walla and Commissioner Soboluk. Mr. Winningham, first item up is the Order of Business. Are there any changes to the Order of Business?
Mr. President, Commissioners, there are no changes to the Order of Business.
Thank you, Mr. Winningham. Any questions on the Order of Business? Now I look for a motion on the Order of Business.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. You can be hearing their names a lot tonight. Any further discussion on the Order of Business? Hearing none, all favor the Order of Business as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda that Commissioners wish to discuss?
I'd make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none will vote, Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Move right into Administration and Finance. First item up is MDI abatements. And City Assessor Hirschfeld will be presenting.
Good afternoon, Mayor Decker, Commissioners. The abatements that we have today are the same properties that were before us in May at the Board of Equalization. Those heard at that time was the 2018 valuation year, this is for 2019 and 2020. The value of the properties was exactly the same for 2019 and 2020. And after discussion with the property owners, they would be very fine with us changing the values for the 19 and 20 properties to what they were in, to the value that we set for the 2018, through the 2018 abatement process, if you will. So if you've got the chart with the colored columns there before you, that magenta one is what we're recommending, as you can see it's exactly the same as the green column. There are still five properties that we're suggesting no change for, but do support change to all the rest of the properties. With that, I'll open it up to any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Hirschfeld. Any questions for Mr. Hirschfeld on these abatements?
Mrs. Winko, separate, separate motion for all these?
I would recommend that, Commissioner Oderman.
Mr. Hirschfeld, why no change on the four properties here? Or five, it looks like?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Frederick, the research that we had on those properties before suggests that their income was high enough to support the value that they had and that those weren't low-income properties in a manner that the other ones were, that were deed restricted. And so they could have different values, or, excuse me, change rents on those to a different factor. They'd be more of an arm's length rent, if you will.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Now I look for...
Mr. President?
A motion or recommendations on these abatements?
I'd move to approve the staff recommendation for MDI LP number 76-972-1096, Metals Drive. That's the first, that's the first one we're looking at, right?
Right, 1481-0100-0300, is that what you're talking about? Or am I looking at a different property?
Now, do we have to do each individual, or can we just do the groupings? Mrs. Winko?
Because your motion is for MDI LP number 76.
Yes, correct.
The grouping should be fine, based on what I have in the report here from Mr. Hirschfeld.
So moved.
Your recommendation is to approve the staffs.
Approve the staff recommendations.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Frederick. Further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, a point of clarification, is that the 19, the 20, or is that for both years? Were you able to pick both years up at once?
If that's Mr. Oderman's...
That was my intent, but if we have to...
Do you do 19 and 20?
Do we have to do separate motions for each year? Mrs. Winko?
I would recommend that you do do separate motions for each year, simply because each year can be dealt with differently and separately. So it probably makes sense to separate them.
So we'll take the first motion by Commissioner Oderman as 2019?
Yes.
Okay. Agreed. And Commissioner Frederick stays with his second. So then we have the 2020 recommendation.
I would make the same motion for 2020.
And second then?
We have the motion to approve the staff recommendation for 2020 by Commissioner Oderman, second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote, Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We'll move on to MDI LP number 112. First item up is the 2019. And is there any further questions? I know Commissioner Frederick asked about the staff recommendation for the first five properties. Are there any other questions? Now I look for a motion on the 2019 recommendation.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion that we approve MDI LP number 112, the staff recommendation for 2019.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick, second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion on this recommendation, staff recommendation for 2019? Hearing none, will vote, Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next item up is the MDI LP number 112, staff recommendation 2020.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to take the staff recommendation on MDI LP number 112 for 2020?
We have a recommendation, a motion by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote, Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Last item is MDI LP number 93. Staff recommend, has recommended changes to five properties. Look for a motion on MDI LP number 93 for 2019.
Mr. President?
Mr. Oderman.
Move to approve staff recommendations for MDI LP number 93, 2019.
Commissioner Oderman has made a motion to accept the staff recommendations for 2019 for MDI LP number 93.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote, Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We have our recommendation for 2020 on MDI LP number 93. Again, there are five changes recommended by staff.
Move to approve 2020 staff recommendations on the value, evaluation.
A motion by Commissioner Oderman to accept the staff recommendations for MDI LP number 93 for 2020.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote, Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. I think that's it.
Thank you.
This evening, Mr. Hirschfeld.
Thank you, President Decker, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item up is our Chapter 11 code updates, City Attorney Winko.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. This is the second reading for the Chapter 11 code updates. The primary update or amendment being made to Chapter 11 would now allow municipal courts to convert criminal judgments into civil judgments for collection in District Court. There have been no changes since the first reading and staff recommend approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Winko. Any questions for Mrs. Winko on ordinance 1772, or 22, excuse me? 1722.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to approve the second reading and final passage of ordinance number 1722.
We have a motion to approve 1722.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next item up is Chapter 23 code updates, City Attorney Winko will handling this.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. Before you is Chapter 23, which pertains to the traffic code violations for the Dickinson Municipal Code. These changes are in relation to the recent legislative updates coming from the North Dakota Sentry Code. These again pertain to traffic violations within city limits. There have been no changes since the first reading, staff recommend approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Winko. Any questions for Mrs. Winko on Chapter 23 updates, ordinance 1723?
Mr. President?
Mr. Oderman.
Move to approve ordinance number 1723.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none will vote, Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next item up, Chapter 25 code updates, City Attorney Winko.
Mr. President, Commissioners, this is for Chapter 25 for the Dickinson Municipal Code updates for the criminal violations occurring within the city limits of Dickinson. Again, in response to the recent legislative changes for the North Dakota Sentry Code. There has been one update since the first reading. I don't know if the Commissioners recall, but in March of 2020, the federal legislation prevented the sale of tobacco to minors, so at that time, the city did update its code. However, the city did not update the code with regard to the possession of tobacco by someone other, under 21. At the time, the thought process was to see what the state would do with regard to that. And there has been a state change in the law that would require possession. No one under the age of 21 can now possess tobacco. So that is a change, we did add it in there, and that is consistent with the state statute now, and the staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Winko. Any questions on Chapter 25 update, ordinance 1724?
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to approve the second reading and final passage of ordinance number 1724.
We have a motion to approve 1724 by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion? Questions? Hearing none will vote, Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Our next item up is our monthly financial report, and this will be handled by Accountant Maury. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. Starting off with our financial report, halfway through 2021 in our fiscal year. This, this is our treasurer's report. Our total unassigned cash at the very bottom there is down about $400,000 from what I presented at the end of May. We are projecting to end 2021 with about $7.5 million in unassigned cash. And the Governate Finance Officers Association policy is actually to keep us between 25% to 50%. So we're right, right at our target for where we're going to end the year with our unassigned cash. Moving on to investments, you can see the investments last month, really no changes at all. I know we mentioned in previous meetings, we make our pension contributions at the beginning of the year. So we're still at roughly $39 million for our investments, no major changes to any of our investment accounts. And then before I get started on our 1% sales tax, I just wanted to mention for Commissioner Oderman, I know you'd asked to see prior year data, so we're still working on getting that on the graphs, but we did include in your packet, I think it's the last eight years of sales tax and oil impact collection. So we will work on getting that added to the graph, but for now, we do have it in your packet.
Thank you.
So with that, as always, a reminder to the public, these are collected on a two-month leg. So for June, we, the red line is 2021, we've collected about $350,000. We're up about $29,000 from June of 2020, so about a 9% increase there. Through the first six months, we are down about $233,000 altogether, so about an 8% decrease in our total 1% sales tax collections. This, this slide here is half of the previous slide, we just show it to show that we have these sales tax in separate funds. Then moving to the hospitality tax, again, the red line is 2021 and the blue line is 2020. In June of 21, we collected about $52,000, so we're up about $11,000 from June of 2020. So about a 27% increase there. Our total for six months, we're down about $39,000, so about a 9% decrease from six months of 2020. And then on our occupancy tax, again, with the red line being 21, we're only about $300, $300 less than we were compared to June of 2020. So just about a 2.5% decrease there. The first six months total, we're down about $26,000 altogether, so about a 23% decrease in our occupancy tax. And then our oil impact revenue, you can see the red line, we did have a pretty steep increase in June of 21. We're actually about $448,000 higher compared to June of 2020, so about a 72% increase there. Our six-month total, we're actually up about $60,000 compared to the first six months of 2020, so about a 1%, increase over the prior year. With that, we'll move on to our general fund expenses and revenue. The graph on the left is our general fund expenses. The, the red part of the circle chart is what we've expended. So we've expended 48% of our general fund budget. Benchmark at six months would be 50%, so we are, we are under budget, so that's right where we need to be on our expenses. And then our general fund revenue, we've collected about 57%, so we're a little ahead of where we projected for our general fund revenue. And then the final slide here is our enterprise funds, so again, the, the chart on the left is our expenses. Just under 40% expended through the first half of the year in our enterprise funds. And then on our enterprise fund revenue, you can see we're just barely over that 50% mark. So we are ahead of the benchmark halfway through the year. So with that, I'll do my best to answer any questions, and city staff recommends approval.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Maury? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion on the monthly financial report.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further questions, discussion? Hearing none will vote, Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to reports, we have our HR monthly report, HR Coordinator Nomenek.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. First on our list today is the Utilities Manager. That position is still on hold, trying to get some other positions filled and things figured out in the department at this time. Water Reclamation, we have several openings, there's two, two openings, I guess, for operators, and we've been doing interviews this week for that. Solid Waste Recycling, we do have an opening there, also did an interview, some interviews today for that position. Communications Specialist, we've got several openings for that position and don't currently have it open. We're working on getting the position open this week. Environmental Compliance Specialist, I believe I talked about this last week. The employee was, the new hire was in the background, so that person has been, our last month, I guess, the, the position has been filled. Leah Upchurch is our Environmental Compliance Specialist, and she is on board. We had some internal promotions within the Police Department. Police Lieutenant, we had two internal promotions. That was Kylan Klausser and Matt Hanson. And then we have, which then leaves open two Sergeant positions. One of them is open right now as the Patrol Sergeant position. Police Officer, still have two openings. We have one person in the, in the background process, and one has been filled. Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong line there. Those, we had some in the background, that didn't work out, and we are now scheduling interviews for later this week. Animal Control Officer is the one we just filled, Miranda Rorvik, and she just started this week. The Building Inspector III was an internal opening, Terry Steffes was promoted to that position from a Building Inspector II. Street Maintenance Operator, we are, have done interviews, we have one person in the background right now. Scale Service Representative, we have done interviews and we actually hired that position. She will be starting soon. Seasonal Utility Laborer, we still have three positions open as, for the seasonal positions in Water Utilities that we're trying to fill. Forestry, looks like it's filled. Street Department, we still have a couple open to fill in that department. We were able to fill a Seasonal Engineering Assistant, and then she has taken another job. So we will be re-advertising that seasonal engineering position. And then Museum, right now, we had three openings, two of them were filled. And then the Tree Data Collection, we're still waiting on a grant for that position, so that will probably be filled later this summer. Any questions on any of those positions?
Commissioners, any questions on the monthly HR report? Thank you, Mr. Nomenek.
Thank you.
We have the monthly report from the Police Department, be handled by Lieutenant Hannel. Welcome.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. I got the privilege this evening to give the June Police Department Report. I'll try not to get long-winded, if you get up by 5 o'clock, let me know. Month of June showed 2,198 calls for service, the top of which, being our suspicious people to speak with an officer, welfare checks continue to be some of the top ranking calls that we're responding to. For our crashes within the city, there were 54 total accidents within the city, two of those resulting in injury, 18 hit-run, and the remaining property crashes. We were just shy of 400 traffic stops for the month of June, 88 citations being issued along with 185 warnings. The top three of those cited violations, the Lead Foot Syndrome there seems to always be the top one there, that 26. Insurance and car required tie for the second spot there, and then registering motor vehicles and stop signs around at the bottom. Arrests for the month of June, the peak in the middle is pretty common for what we've been seeing month over month. The drug-related offenses seem to be the one that occupy the most. Followed, as far as like fresh offenses, I should say, warrants obviously account for a big lion's share of our workload in terms of arrests. Behavioral health, in many of these last several iterations of meetings, we've been trying to establish just the, the scope of the behavioral health situation that we're facing here in southwest North Dakota. Our numbers continue to reflect that, that is, again, a big lion's share of our responses. Almost three a day in the month of June, 78 welfare checks, 12 mental health, intoxicated subjects at six, and then the suicidal threats at three. So they certainly occupy a significant portion of the, the control function throughout the month of June. Our investigators were particularly busy in, in June as well, they opened up 56 new cases. 50 of those are still open and under investigation. Aside duty of our criminal investigators is to conduct background checks on potential Police Department employees, including dispatch and ACO, which was completed in June. We only had three call-outs in June, which is a little bit lower than usual, reckless endangerment call. Our investigative division was also instrumental in our escaped inmates that we have in the Correctional Center in mid-June there. Our intel analyst was actually able to get some pretty fresh intelligence right out of the, right out of the gate as, as that began unfolding and was pivotal to being able to apprehend the inmates within, I believe it was about three hours of them escaping. So it was a really good success story for June. Then they also assisted a outside agency with a sexual assault investigation. One of the, the highlights here in June that we had, our Corporal Detective Lyons, who is our Internet Crimes Against Children Coordinator for our department, went to a conference town in Florida and made contact with a company or an organization called Project Underground Railroad. They're doing phenomenal work nationwide in terms of investigating sexual exploitation of minors and finding the sources of those. And so they were at this particular conference, and Detective Lyons was able to make, make some agreements there, and he was able to procure what we call a gray key cellphone extractor. So this gray key, there's only one other one in the state, so anytime we had an exploitation case, we always had to ship those devices off to Bismarck if we couldn't access them. So if they were locked either iOS or Android, and so it was very time-consuming and, and very expensive. But the, the company, this Project Underground Railroad, has provided the city of Dickinson, Dickinson Police Department, a two-year agreement for the use of this device, which amounts to $60,000 cost, basically more or less a donation to the city for use of that technology and accessing these phones and, and efforts to advance our capabilities in investigating these, these Internet crimes against children. So we're very fortunate, it gives us up a notch with our department, as far as our capabilities and our professional services that we're able to provide to the public. So we're very fortunate for that organization to be helping us out with that. Just some of our, highlighting some of our June training that our detectives and patrol staff were involved with. We had eight of all of our detectives participate in Amber Alert Missing Children Training. One new detective has been trained as a ICAC detective as well in crimes against children. So now we have two on staff that are certified for that. Again, Corporal Lyons was able to attend the ICAC Conference in Florida. We had Detective Okie attend DRE Conference, Drug Recognition Expert. And then on the patrol side of it, A-Ride, which is a Advanced Roadside Interdiction Training. We had the two officers attend that. Some of the ones, just briefly, some human trafficking out of our CIU Division. Field training officers, we've, are trying to bolster our training staff quite a bit with, on the patrol side of it. A couple conferences, and last but not least down there is the less lethal training. It's our intent to eventually deploy basically beanbag rounds on patrols, for patrol responses. Currently, that capability is only one of the few spots, so having these two officers trained at, at a instructor level will allow us to be able to expand, to have those capabilities on, on the street level as opposed to just on a tactical level. So we're, we're excited about being able to field that here. Switching over to our dispatch services, our non-emergency calls have, have certainly gone up over the course of the first of the year, approximately by the 5,800 non-emergency. Emergency calls approximately nine, a little over 900. The current staffing for our dispatch center is 10 full-time communications specialists. Two of those new hires are in training, and we're expecting them to be at the end of the month here, full-time, more or less. We did have one hire intending to start here in July, but that candidate's since withdrawn, so we do actually have two vacancies, like Ms. Nomenek had alluded to in her report. so we do actually have two vacancies like Ms. Nomenek had alluded to in her report. As far as our animal shelter, Running at Large is account for a big share of their responses at about 84. And just briefly, the, the numbers out at the shelter right now remain relatively low about the number of animals that are staying there long-term. Currently there's only five, there's three dogs and two cats. So our staff out there is doing a phenomenal job of finding animals, new homes or returning to owner as well. I have two final plugs here before I turn it back over for any questions. The first, we've highlighted a couple of times, the press has, Dickens Press has covered this a little bit and some other news outlets. We have launched a crime mapping website in collaboration with our record management system. So if citizens go to crimemapping.com, enter our zip code, they'll get a rough estimate as far as the crime that's occurring in their neighborhood. And the, the items that are plotted, as you can kind of see on the sample map here, are all the neighbors reportable crimes that are occurring within Dickinson. There's, there are some limitations on that. This is again, just strictly the crimes that we report to the FBI. So our assaults, vandalism, so on and so forth, doesn't necessarily indicate all of the department activity, but it gives a rough idea about what's going on in everyone's neighborhood. So citizens can make informed decisions about their safety. So we're excited to have that online. And then yeah, the final plug I want to get, I don't have a slide for it, but again, if nobody has had the chance to listen to our new podcast, the Off the Cuff Podcast, I encourage you to download it wherever you get your podcasts from. Our last episode, we had Mr. Whinneyham on. He shared his real compelling and heartfelt vision for the city and how that intersects with public safety. So we were very fortunate to have him on. Time flew and I think when I scratched the surface of some of the ideas that he has and some of the stories that he has, we hope to have him on sometime again here soon. So with that, I'll stand for any questions if you do have anything.
Thank you, Lieutenant Hannel. Any questions for Lieutenant Hannel?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. It is five o'clock. We have a public hearing. First item up is a rezone request. Porter Wilk Properties, Planning Director Hadley.
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioner. Yes, this is the second reading and public hearing for ordinance 1721. It says zone change from RR to R1. There hasn't been any public comment to staff since the last reading and staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Any questions for Mr. Hadley before I open up the public hearing? All right, we will open up the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Hadley. If there's anybody from the public that wishes to come forward, please state your name if you have any concerns or questions on the rezone request for the Porter Wilk Properties. And if you're watching online, you may call in. The number for that is area code 701-456-7006. Anyone have any public comments on the rezone request? Again, if you're watching online, you may call in. Area code 701-456-7006. Anyone have any public comments? Seeing no one has any comments on this rezone request, Mr. Hadley, your recommendation, staff recommendation is approval?
Yes, sir.
I'd look for a motion from Commissioners. We have a motion to approve the staff recommendation by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hadley. See you shortly. Next item up is our annual report from Elder Care. Welcome.
Good evening, good afternoon. I don't know what you call this late after five, but my name's Colleen Rodakowski. I'm the executive director over at Elder Care and Dickinson Public Transit and I address the mayor, commissioners and community present and at home with us on TV. And once a year, Elder Care Public Transit gives a report for the prior year and we are doing the report for last year, which is the 2020 year. And first of all, Dickinson Public Transit is totally essential for our community. It's good for our wellbeing. We take people of all, all types in our community. We transport them to places they need to be in our town and we contribute overall to the economic vitality of the Dickinson community. Our agency at Dickinson Public Transit works to meet the changing needs of our riders and we provide these services, as I said earlier, to allow people to get to where they need to go. And a lot of it is, the number one ride is employment and we also take people to, to other places. Why do we need Dickinson Public Transit? We are the only transit agency in the town that offers wheelchair rides as well as Sanford healthcare payments and Medicaid payments. We reduce the traffic congestion and we alleviate parking demands, especially in downtown as we bring people towards the downtown community. And we help members of our community remain independent and we increase their quality of life. This next slide is the top, the top places we take people. I mentioned earlier about work, shopping, medical, social events, education. This is our, our income for 2020. The majority of our income, 63% is agency income and that's the funds that come through DOT. We get subsidy through DOT, the Department of Transportation. The second largest income that we receive is our local match and local match consists of senior county mill levy, contracts, United Way, donations and state aid that we receive. And then the next one is our transit or fare income. That's going to be the fares that we receive from the riders. We charge $4 one way in the city limits of Dickinson and then outside of town is $4 plus a dollar a mile. We also go to Bismarck and we were going once a week on Tuesdays to Bismarck and that cost was $75 round trip. Now, when COVID hit and the need increased and we were getting extra funding or funding from the state, we go every day as long as we have a vehicle and driver available. We are taking people to Bismarck and we kept the fare the same as a pre-scheduled fare of 75. It used to be 125 on an off day. Here's a little bit more detail of the funds. We pulled in about 1.2 million last year and you can see where the transit income, the fares, the agency from the state and the local match. I draw attention to the city sales tax. We have an agreement with the city and we receive 150,000 that we split between Elder Care and Dickinson Public Transit, as well as we receive some subsidy for transit in the amount of 55,000. So that 205,000 comes in support from, from you and we thank you so much for, for that contribution. We could not do transit without the subsidy that we receive. We are so grateful for the partnership and support we receive from the city of Dickinson. Not only do we get this funds to help us, we also receive rent free and some utility free in our building. Our building is, was created through some stimulus, stimulus money when President Obama was in office and that was, the building was built from that stimulus money through DOT, but the building was transferred to the city. The city owns our Dickinson Public Transit building that houses Elder Care as well as the transit. We have a beautiful garage that we're kind of outgrowing. So somewhere down the line, we'd like to do an addition, but we have a wonderful garage to house the vehicles as well as the offices. Here's a slide now on expenses. Expenses were a little over a million for a net income of 208,000 and per salaries and wages, like most companies and the payroll expenses, those are our top, top weight expenses that we have. Like to come back to our trips. I mentioned those a little bit at the beginning. This is, these are the top trips that we take and I want to draw attention, when I came here about 13 years ago, we were doing medical rides, mostly medical, and we were taking a lot of the elderly, elderly and disabled people in our community. But we switched the course over with our funding being from the state and the community. We are open to the whole public. So we have worked over the past 10 years or more to increase public awareness that you can take public transit. Work is number one. We went to work being number one over medical during the oil boom and it has maintained as our number one ride. Shopping or medical has been number two all along, all the years I've been here and last year, shopping went above. And that's really because of COVID. And when everything hit with COVID, we were tremendously impacted and once COVID hit, you know, medical, a lot of medical appointments were scaled down and done over Zoom or the phone call and shopping, of course scaled down as well, but it's only about a 300, 300 change between shopping and medical trips. Public buildings have increased over the past few years as our number four and we started tracking, taking people to our public buildings in the community and then recreation, kidney dialysis and education. And this, this tells the last four, few years, work, medical, shopping and public transit, a bar chart of those, those comparatives. And here's another comparative. Here the rise are broken between general public, elderly, wheelchair, KDU and Bismarck trips and the general public has definitely increased over the years and we're not able to ask if someone meets the quality of, or meets the category of elderly. So there are some elderly people in that general public category as well, but we do not, we are, we don't ask birthdays to, to, to put somebody into the elderly component. And then you see the wheelchairs. And here's just another comparison. The last, from 2016, we have been on a hot, going high, going up every year. 2019 was, we were breaking records. Before COVID hit, we were breaking records, almost up to 4,000 trips a month and we were breaking a lot of records prior to COVID for every day of the week. Now here's where I'd like to, the passenger and trip comparison, we dropped in last year with when COVID hit. We dropped about 19, 18% between passengers and trips and I think everybody understands why that all happened. This just shows the, the graph of our growth from 2017 and then the drop when COVID hit. This is a nice comparison of the past 11 years. I apologize, the one through 12 on the bottom, somehow when we converted the files to the standard four to three for you to present with all the other files, we lost the years on the bottom and didn't catch that. But of course, one is 2009, 12 is 2020. Like to just draw attention to what has affected public transit since 2009. 2009, you know, we didn't have a taxi, the taxi closes the doors and we kind of picked up on some of that. Oil picked up, we were doing rides through the bar crowds on Saturdays and Sunday, open till 10:00 at night. That, we lowered that and changed those hours of operation 2018. When taxis started appearing in 2012, we pulled back because we don't compete with for-profits and the taxis that were in town were covering some of the things that we were covering and we did not, we did not compete with that. And you guys created the taxi ordinance in 2016. We lowered our fares and altered our hours in 2018 from the Nelson Nygaard study that was, was completed from Nelson Nygaard on the East Coast. City of Dickinson helped us with the 20% match where we did a really nice study of the community of Dickinson and transit. We've made some changes from that and that's where our shopping shuttles we'd like to incorporate. We put that on the back burner because when COVID hit, we really just needed to scale back on that. There wasn't the opportunity to do that because of the fear of transit and the natural fear that was happening with transit and people not using transit. Do know that we operate, and I have that in some later slides, but when COVID hit, we did all we could to maintain safety because that's our number one mission at Dickinson Public Transit is safety and then the second is exceeding customer service. So of course, the, the things that everybody was doing, you know, social distancing, masking, sanitizing, we are continuing to be masked, just like the healthcare is through the federal government rules and regulations. TSA is looking at possibly eliminating the masks September 13. That's a tentative date where boats, airline, transit are possibly going to be eliminating the masks, but we won't know that till then. And I believe, as everybody is aware, if you're keeping up with COVID, the delta, the delta, excuse me, strain is something that we're watching closely and I know Sheri Adams is as well in this community to, to protect us and to provide the services she can for vaccinations and testing. Challenges, these are the challenges that we're facing and I believe all of us in the community are facing hiring and retaining staff. Lot of, lot of things that have happened this past year are really challenging us to hire and to get applicants in and we're, we continue to, to have challenges in that. Of course, maintaining the lifespan of our vehicles, I have a slide later, our fleet is extremely aged. The good news is, I wrote a couple of grants with the state and we've got about 10 vehicles that we can purchase with hopes of purchasing eight of them yet this year, but vehicles are very, very long time to get them in. I think the last vehicle we ordered took about seven, eight months with back orders, the chips, kind of like we have in the vehicle industry as well that the people in the community are experiencing. We are having the same challenges with buying our buses and vans. Always, always watching traffic congestion, deterioration of roads. We're making some awesome changes on the road going out to Tiger Discount, but of course that really, you know, we're working on it. It slows us down just like anything else in town. So we always have to watch that with doing our rides so that we are giving a safe ride in the fastest, most efficient way. Higher than normal amount of concerns and complaints that we've been receiving this last year and I don't know if it's COVID related, a little bit with the challenges that everybody is experiencing, but we have seen a little bit higher of complaints and concerns being expressed to us and we work on those as well. I feel in the vehicle lifespan, which is like, you know, a van goes about 100,000 miles to a four, four years timeframe, a bus is 150 in five years and then we're looking at doing a replacement. Now, this is an interesting slide to show how aged our fleet is, but we take very good care of our fleet and take care of maintenance and we have a wash bay in the garage, so we do the best we can to present ourselves in the high caliber that we operate. This is our newest vehicle, we called it Snail. We have the staff give us ideas for what to call our vehicles and it took so long to get here. It was between Turtle and Snail, but it will be called Snail. Our vehicles have an animal on them to help people see, reflect back to that vehicle. It's a nice, it's a nice addition to our service for the elderly and disabled to, to recognize our vehicles. And that vehicle just got detailed today and it's going to be all set to get on the road. Successes, you know, big success. You know, the pandemic was tough and we're still in it in capacity, but I think that we learned a lot from it as well. The biggest thing that I wanted to do as well as our board is we remained open. We did not change our hours of operation. We kept everything as stable for the community so they knew that we were there and we, of course, like I mentioned, we established all the practices to place so that the community was confident and trusting of us with our service. I mentioned the replacement vehicles. In 2020, we updated our Facebook page more, but we've, we've lost some of the positions throughout the year that was doing that. We need to get back into that. So that's also a goal for this year for us is to get back working on Facebook. And we're making enhancements to our website, but we're also looking at revamping the entire website. We kind of want to update it. Always a success when we maintain financial stability and security and of course, our staff is our highest asset, the support and the service they give to our community. Management worked from home during COVID for several reasons and one of them, of course, to keep ourselves healthy, to operate and manage the company. course, to keep ourselves healthy, to operate and manage the company. And we also have it so our staff can work from home. So if somebody got the virus or was a close contact, we had the ability with laptops. And I got to thank Erin Humphrey. I'd like to really quick introduce Erin. Erin's the Assistant Executive Director. If you could stand Erin. Erin is just a phenomenal asset to our board. She set up all the laptops so that our staff could, could keep working, so that they could keep getting paid and we can keep operating. And her technology that she brings to the, to the table is wonderful for us, plus all her finance background. She's, she's my right arm, so can't do it without her, so thank you. I'm going to throw a plug in for the rest of the management team. Kelsey, Kelsey Canall is our HR manager as well. She's fabulous. The three of us are in the management team, as well as we have a manager that's operating in the meal program, Dawn. And Woodall, and the whole office staff, drivers, dispatchers, they're just a phenomenal group, providing wonderful service for elder care and transit for our community. We maintain the meals and transit services during everything. And, and, and I think that, that for us, that's a huge success through the, through Let's see. Extreme heavy, extreme heavy workflows with staff as we're short. I'm sure you guys, I'm thinking, listening to Shelley's report with your HR, you're filling some of those open slots as well. Puts pressure on the staff for our present, and we appreciate all that they did. These are the goals for this year. One is the Boulevard needs landscaping. I did write a grant for that. I really, probably going to come back and ask for the 20% for that from you guys. At somewhere down the line, I have $8,000 to redo the Boulevard. That was in poor condition since the building was built in 2012, and it needs to be resloped. I have the 8,000, I'm, I'm going to need a 20% match. And just because we work together, I think it'd be nice if the city of Dickinson would consider the 2,000 that we need for that. We have a generator install, or ordered. We're waiting for it to come in any day. That's been on back order since December, and we're, that's going to help us continue operations when we need to use it. And I already talked about the Facebook page. We always are continuing to, to change things to provide great service for our community. I mentioned the eight vehicles and shopping shuttles. And then holiday tour lights, we canceled it with COVID. We sure would like to get back to that this Christmas to take the community around to see the holiday Christmas lights in our town. What's critical to us and to sustain us is maintaining and always increasing funding as, as inflation and prices increase. And once again, so grateful for the support of the city and the state for helping us with all that. Senior County Mill Levy, United Way, the partnerships we have, the contracts in the, in the town, we're so grateful. And of course, DOT, we couldn't do our jobs without DOT. They're a phenomenal partner to help us. Always looking to maintain and retain and grow our staff and adapt to new market needs. I covered some of this already, but, and I think, I don't have to go heavy into COVID because I think we all have lived it, all the things we've done to create a safe environment, not just for our transit and our employees, but also for elder care. Now, our ridership decreased tremendously when COVID hit March and April. And our ridership has been increasing slowly, which I think is a phenomenal success. We were up to maybe a little over 4,000 trips a month pre-COVID, and we dropped considerably, you know, during the COVID months when we were hitting. And then our rides slowly, slowly made our way back up. Right now, I put up there the 2021, it's a 2020 report, but it's good to see where we are right now. And we, last couple months, we, we were over 3,000 trips. So that's really awesome, you know, that people are, are getting out and about. And of course, we received some additional funding, I mentioned, from DOT as well as elder care to help us get through the COVID pandemic. I want to throw a little bit in on elder care as well. You guys asked for a public transfer report, but elder care is the meal program that serves the community in all Southwest North Dakota, is our meals. And we help seniors, our mission there is to help seniors remain independent in their home as long as possible before they have to go to assisted living or a nursing home. I think all of us want to be at home as long as possible. A healthy nutritional meal is one of the first steps to help because as we age, it gets harder and harder to cook. And as seniors lose a spouse or loved one, it's hard to eat alone. So we have meal sites where we call them congregate meals, where people go eat. Those have all been shut down with COVID. We are looking next month possibly to open up some of those meal sites with, we have to put a plan together with the state and follow social distancing and COVID guidelines to open those sites. But we're going to, we're going to give that a try, even though we're not sure where the Delta virus is going to go by fall, but we're ready, our seniors are ready to get back together. And we struggled to keep, we, we went to all home delivered meals during COVID. When we shut the meal sites down, everybody got a home delivered meal if they wanted a meal. And we had a lot of challenges, hiring staff to do that, and actually, the office staff is still delivering meals. We really need people to come, either volunteer or a paid position to deliver home delivered meals. So I do a shout out to everybody here and everybody at home. If you are looking for a couple hour a day job, you can come work for us or volunteer if you want to, to deliver those home delivered meals to the seniors in our community. We operated with a net income last year, first time in three years, elder care program we had, had a net income. We've been struggling over the last three years, but we have maintained operations. A lot of that was because of the pandemic money that came in to help us feed seniors. And I think a lot of this, I think the biggest thing I'd like to showcase is we partnered with Country Kitchen during the pandemic to get more meals out to people. So we are working with Country Kitchen, they're doing a meal a week, which is nice because Sodexo at DSU does our meals every day, and if something comes up that they can't do meal, I have a nice backup with Country Kitchen. Cafe 60s, there's a few of them open. Buzzies and Beach has been open. Jodeo's is open in, where's Jodeo's at? Holiday. Yep. And then we did open up a brand new Bistro 60, which is a new meal program we created that's not through the state, so we don't have to follow all the nutrition requirements because some of the smaller restaurants struggle to bring in all the food at a reasonable cost, especially when food has increased so much with COVID. So right now, we have a Bistro 60 at Wendy's Restaurant in Bowman. And it's going a little bit slow, but we're trying to get it, get it going a little bit more so seniors can come. Seniors do have to pay for the bistro meal $5, where elder care meals are contribution based. And we ask for a contribution of $5, but people don't have to. And of course, our goals continue to keep our everything moving just like we have. I'd like to look at a takeout meal for our seniors. A lot of our seniors are working, the state guidelines through the Older American Act that we operate under will not allow a senior to pick up a meal. During the pandemic, they're able to, but there is a lot of seniors over the age of 60 having to keep working in order to support themselves. I'd like to see if we can create some type of a takeout meal for their lunch, or they get off work at 5:00. I know I have a handful of friends that are tired by the time you get home to try to cook that meal, they can maybe pick one up. And the last thing really is, this is another COVID chart, but again, we're just continuing to follow all the practices we can to maintain the safe operations. Something we do, and I saw the officer before me talked about welfare checks. The, the city of Dickinson Police help us with welfare checks as well if a senior is not home. If a senior's not home for their meal, we call their emergency contacts. If we can't, we have the police help us with a welfare check. Because once, there's a few times that someone maybe had a stroke and then on the floor of their kitchen, very rarely, but you know, sometimes somebody has a health issue and they need some help, and they, we, we are the ones that find them, to help them. And I, I'd like to tell you a little update. We did 11,500 more meals during the pandemic year than the year before. And that's because of the state offering us more dollars to help feed the seniors during the pandemic. 11,500, we served almost 72,000 meals last year, which I think is just phenomenal to help seniors. Our net income that I mentioned in the red was about $5,900. So, but it's, you know, 6,000 is better than being in the hall. So last year, we made, we were about, I think I showed 208,000 in public transit, and we were almost 6,000 in the red, or in the green for, for, for elder care. And I, that's about, that's all I have on my presentation, but I'll entertain any questions that you may have on elder care or public transit.
Any questions for Mrs. Rotikowski?
Mr. President.
Otterman.
Keep up the good work. I, I know that you guys bring our KDU patients to the hospital on a daily basis, and I mean, that's, it's, we couldn't provide the first class care that we do at the hospital out of your guys' support, so thank you for everything you do.
You're welcome, and we really appreciate helping anybody in our community get to where they want to go. But yeah, our kidney dialysis patients are very fragile, and we work hard to get them home as fast as we can after they receive that, the dialysis. So, yeah.
Thank you.
That's it? Okay. And then once again, can't, can't say enough about the partnership. In the world today, or I think in any business, we have to have partnerships of support to each other, and I, we can't do it all, what we are doing without the support of the city and all of you in the community. So we're happy to be here and to continue to provide our services for meals and transit. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hadley. Have a few things on stable estates.
I do, sir, yes. All four of the items that you have remaining are obviously related to stable estates. The first three have all had public hearings already in May, I believe. The first item is the second reading of Ordinance 1711. Staff hasn't received any other comments on that. It's a future land use amendment from residential to agricultural for the common lot that they're creating. Staff would recommend approval of.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Any questions for Mr. Hadley on Ordinance 1711, which is a future land use map amendment, residential to ag, I mean, it should be ag to residential, right?
No. Residential to ag.
Residential.
Yep. Yep. They are, it's going to be their.
It's going to be their actual stable, yep.
Yep.
Mr. President.
Mr. Otterman.
Move to approve Ordinance 1711?
We have a motion to approve Ordinance 1711 by Commissioner Otterman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Hadley, you have a rezone request from R1 to ag.
Yes, Mr. President. This is the same piece of property that you just heard, the future land use map amendment, it's R1 to ag now. The, it'd be Ordinance 1712. Same thing, staff hasn't heard any comments from this since the first reading and public hearing, and staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Any questions for Mr. Hadley on Ordinance 1712?
Mr. President.
Frederick?
I'd make a motion to approve the second reading and final passage of Ordinance 1712.
We have a motion to approve the second reading and final passage of 1712 by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Otterman. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Hadley, we have a rezone request, R1 to rural residential, Ordinance 1713.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Yes, it's also related to the same project. These are the residential lots. No comments from the public to staff on this request either, and staff would recommend approval of the second reading of 1713.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Any questions for Mr. Hadley on this rezoning request?
Mr. President.
Mr. Otterman.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve 1713 by Commissioner Otterman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any questions, comments on Ordinance 1713? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Hadley, you have a final plat.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This would be Resolution 23-2021, I believe, and it would be the final plat for stable estates, creating the development of the other, future land use and zone changes allowed. Staff would recommend approval. Staff has not received any comments since the planning and zoning hearing on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Any questions on Resolution 23-2021?
Mr. President, move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Otterman. Any further questions or comments on Resolution 23-2021? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hadley.
Thank you, sir.
That moves us right into our 535, which is public comments not on the agenda. If there are any individuals in the audience that have any comments pertaining to items not on the agenda, please come forward, state your name, and let us know your concerns. If you're watching online, you may call into 701-456-7006.
The conference is currently empty. You will hear silence or music on hold when connected.
Does anyone have any public comments not on the agenda? Yes, sir.
Jeff Fitzick? Yes, I have a, a comment. I was here a couple months ago pertaining to the minutes for the city of Dickinson posted at the website. Some of you felt my pain. I said I'd give you guys a little time to, to look into it. I did see that there were some minutes that had suddenly been posted, all the way up to April of this year, in one category. The rest remain more or less the way they were. You can go and kind of sort of view some of the minutes, the amount of directors present, for example, and so forth. Shows a bunch of PDF documentations, depending on what you click on, which the public apparently can't open. And so no details of any meetings, or reports, no details on anything appear to be available on the website at this time. So I was just kind of wondering if that's a work in progress yet, or if nothing's been done at all, or where's that at?
I would tend to believe that we are working on it. I know there's some transition going on with the IT department moving into the new city hall. They're getting all the, the hard structured equipment over there, so I, I don't know in detail how much they've worked on the website. I would have to, I guess, defer to Mr. Winningham.
When I go to our website, to the very first, we created a tab flyer, minutes and meetings. It's on the left of the current website, and we posted all minutes that were available. Agendas from January 2013 to, to January 2019, all the minutes and recorded meetings for the city commission. So I'm not, I'm not sure.
Is, is this the page that you're referring to?
I'd have to go to the website and show you, but when, if you go to the website.
From your website.
Mr. Fitzick, it's, so I'm, I'm looking at it right now.
Yep.
On the left-hand side, there's a new tab that says meetings and minutes.
Okay.
You click there, and it, it pulls up a different site.
So it's not under city commission and meeting and minutes there?
They've made it a little bit more. It's on the very front of the website.
Yep.
Okay.
And it's a big tab on the left, says minutes and meetings.
All right.
So if you hit that tab, you can look from 2005 until 2022, uploading things that haven't happened yet because we're, we're posturing. And you should be able to get the minutes, but if you can't, at any time, you can call my office.
I understand that I can get ahold of Rita and get them. It's, again, just checking on the progress because when I went, I couldn't find them.
Yeah, within 24 hours, all those were done.
Also would have a difficulty, I would assume.
Yeah. I'm, I'm on that right now, too. I can. It's, I'll, I'll, I'll say is, looking at this is a lot better than it used to be.
Well, and I appreciate that. Like I said, I saw some changes, but the one that I found over here, and that's what I printed out, goes through April of, April. I printed out, goes through April of, April 21 is the last 2021 posting for, for the minutes. So, so there was some progress made, but.
Yeah, I'll say it again for all those that are listening.
Just kind of wondering where it was at.
For minutes and meetings, if you go to the city's website for the city of Dickinson at Dickinsongov.com, on the left-hand side where it says minutes and meetings, there's a new flyer, a new flyout box. And if you press on that tab, I was trying to get it to where there was less than three clicks. And so that, that will pull up the, the meeting and minutes site, but then you go to city commission, and under that city commission label, there is minutes. If you go to minutes, that's the third click, and then you'll have what appears to be the 2005 to 2000, 2022 is on there, but it's 2005 to 2021.
2021, the most recent one we have is April, April 12, 21st.
That's what I found.
But there's, there's no, on, on the one I'm looking at, there's no PDFs or anything.
No, no. That's in that paperless packet type deal where I found that. I, I went to both places, so.
But there are PDFs under the, the, the older ones.
Okay.
So it's, yeah, so I mean, we made some good progress, but we need to make some more.
Very good.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I appreciate it, and if you guys could get those up to date, that would be good, so that everybody who can't sit and watch the recording can, can see what went on. Thank you very much for your time. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Fitzick.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else have any comments on items not on our agenda? Again, if you're watching online, 701-456-7006. Anyone else from the public? Seeing no one else from the public has any comments, I'll close that public hearing and public comments section. Commissioners, do you have any items? There are no items from the commission. I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Someone?
Second?
We are adjourned.